Hello, anybody hear me?
Oh. Oh. Ah.
Oh, hey Jim.
Well, I see some people are here.
Hey Tony.
It looks like Jim, looks like Bill. Christine, of course, is not here, but she's hosting it.
Yeah, Tony, can you hear me?
Uh. I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, good.
Can you hear me? Here. I don't know what Jim is watching. Something up in the air.
Sure.
Yeah, there he is. Can't hear him though. Can't hear you Jim, you're on mute.
There we go. No?
I hear somebody. Yep.
Hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I hate Webex. Alright.
We got you.
Okay.
We got you looking up in the sky, but we got you.
Alright, I'll turn that off.
Okay. As long as we can hear you.
Yeah. Oh, there it is, okay. Every one of these programs has the mute button in a different place, and I can never remember where it is.
I know. Well, I see Terry. And there's Jeremy.
Hello.
Who's calling user two, do you know Tony?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, I was just gonna ask. Who caller number two is?
Uh, I think it's me. Bill.
No, I've got you, I thought I had you down below.
Well, you'll see, uh, so you see a WS. That's for me logged in on my computer, but then I called in.
Oh, okay.
On my iPhone, I think I'm calling too.
Okay. Let's see Stan.
Hello.
So where's our glorious leader? There's Bill again.
Yeah, I had my camera off, I didn't know.
Ed's, uh, Ed's in New York moving his daughter or something, so. Life might have gotten in the way of logging in at 5:30.
And there's Ray, and. Ed's, okay, it's going up.
Yeah, here it comes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
We're missing Sharon and Manir, it looks like.
Yeah, I think Sharon said she could make it, so. Not sure what's going on.
Yeah, I didn't see a note from her. Did she actually say she could make it?
Yeah, I thought I saw an email that said she could make it.
Yes, I did too.
I see her coming on. So the only one I don't see is Manir.
I didn't, he didn't respond. From what I could tell.
I'm on one screen and I see my thing on the other screen.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm standing above it, the other one's sitting.
There's somebody's conversation.
Ray's on, that's good.
I can't get my camera to work.
You can't?
No.
Nope.
Well, as long as you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Alright, you don't need to see me.
Yeah, we can see some background there, but we can't see you.
Yeah, it's a typical GU view, it's a black hole. The time we look at it, it's a black hole. Uh, Tony, how you doing? Are we ready to start?
Uh, I'm almost ready to start, I'm gonna assume that Manir's not gonna come, so I'm gonna go to the attendance screen, I'll get that set up, then I'll tell you when I'm ready to roll. Should only take me a minute or so here.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. In the meantime, we'll, uh. See everybody.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Is, is there like an email list or something that I should be on? Because I just happened to see the meeting time got changed, because I went town hall today and saw the, the posting. I still, I would have thought it was at seven o'clock still. If I didn't stop by there.
So, what I have to do is get an email from Christine to make sure you're on the email list. I know I had included you. But, uh, from how that drops out, so we'll, uh, we'll update that later.
Okay.
Almost there.
Very nice, Sam.
Where'd that to be?
Yeah, I think that's where we are.
Okay, Ed, I think I'm ready to go.
Okay, it is 5:34 PM for the special meeting of the Ledgered Water Pollution Control Authority, a call to order, and the roll call. Ed Lynch, Terry Jones, Jeremy Norris, Tony Capone, Stan Uber, Bill Soms, Sharon Rodecky, and Jim Ball. I think Jim, you're there. I don't see you, but I see something, okay. Then, who is calling user two?
That's me, Ed, Bill.
Oh, that's Bill, I'm sorry.
I'm on my phone.
Oh, alright, so there's two of you we gotta deal with, alright.
Well, Ed, we'll appoint Jim Ball as the alternate, or as the party member.
Yes, for, for Manir.
Yep.
I don't see any residents or property owners on, so we'll skip that. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 28, 2020.
Second by Stan.
Second by Stan? Uh, I did make some clarifications in the minutes, I put them in parentheses. It was due to some questions some people had during the bid process, so I just simply clarified what we met by the statements we made. So if there's any, any additions or exclusions or edits we need to make, let me know now. I'll give you a minute there to review it.
Was that moved by Terry and seconded by Stan?
Yes.
Okay. Because I can't, I'm on here, so I can't see people.
Yeah, I made a clarification note on the bid that, uh, only quoted one reading per month per customer was made on one of the bids. Where experience has shown additional readings resulting in higher costs based on time and material. Also made a clarification that one of the bids is to walk into the Plaineville office, not in Groton or others, other locations. Otherwise, uh, that's the only, that's the only clarification I made. If you see, no, if, if, if nobody is objecting, I will, um. Close the discussion and, um, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of July 28, 2020 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or any nays? Hearing none, it's approved.
Jim Ball abstained.
Jim Ball abstained, okay. Uh, operations report, put Ray on the stand. Uh, Ray, my only question, as other people are looking at this, is, are we gonna get credit for the salvage metal that's, that's returned? When they, you know, they pull the metal out in the tank? You know?
For the tank?
Yeah.
That would be, that would be in your, in the bid. At, uh, whatever the cost is, uh, it reflects subtraction for that.
Alright, so they would, they, they would subtract that, Ed.
Yeah, it'd be part of the bid package, that whatever they get for the tank steel, that they'll, you know, they put back in.
Yeah, I would.
Keep the bid lower.
Okay, I would encourage the commissioners to take a look at this, it's pretty extensive. And, it looks like a pretty good bid to me.
Now, my que, I do have a question, Ed, and, uh, to do the bid, we used to just give you the backend of our, the technical specs and Ledger would put the front end in, is that what we're still doing?
Yes, we will, we will take this and I'll give it to Liz to put the front end in.
Okay, I just want everybody to check it for us, if you see any comments, send it back, and then we'll send it out.
Yeah, I'm not gonna give it to, I'm, I'm not gonna give it to Liz until everybody's seen this, at least for a week or so.
Okay.
Right. Uh, the next thing in the operations report is the leak test. Um, and I'm assuming, um, we ignore these minor leaks, we don't do much about, it looks like they're mostly hydrant leaks.
Yeah, so what happens, we had a bunch of them too. What happens is sometimes when they close the hydrants, either you can tighten the hydrant too tight, and it will, will leak, it will go over the seat, so. We'll take it, back it off, check, we put a, our listening device on it, and then if it might cause that, uh, something's down below, that we have to take apart and change the rubber or something like that, so. We're gonna start checking those, so we just got it, made a game plan, because we have a bunch in Groton. And then the biggest one is Lorenza Parkway. We gotta take a look at that and see what, he didn't have a good, uh, correlation, but we're gonna open, grab the valves and put the, put all the listening device on it and see what we can find.
Is it a size of leak?
It says 10,000 gallons, so, uh.
Ooh.
It's not like, uh, not real, real big, it's a size, but it's, it's a good enough size that we'll take.
Okay.
Yep.
Ray, how about the metered flushing line on Route 12?
That was ours, uh, matter of fact, we put the, so when he was doing it, we had a, the flush your lines out, we put, he ran along it and put it down as, uh, something that was marked, but we're flushing for the THMs. It was us, so what we did is you turned the hydrant off and took the meter off, so we're all set.
Okay. Alright.
We have one at the bridge, Terry, so we can keep the main clean, because the only person you have on towards, uh, Buckettonic Cove is, uh, Holmberg's Orchard, the little, uh, store. And then the apartments, the house is at the below, so you got a 12-inch line that, you know, the, the water will go flat on them, so we flush it every week. Keep it running a little, so, yep.
Yeah. Hey Ray, I see they're still attacking the Gail's Ferry tank in the, in your report, you might wanna change that.
I think. Yeah, I told them to do that before, okay. It's, it's, we're standing pretty good.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, we'll go down to the, uh, that's it. There is some service correspondence, I just received this. Uh, which is gonna be, actually save us a significant amount of money. Uh, Tina has, and, and the service wants to end the Brink's truck transfer to the bank. It apparently isn't worth doing, and it's, we're, we're being charged $900 a month to do this. So, we could save over $10,000 a year if we just tell them to go ahead and transfer the funds, the way I think they're gonna do it with their own funds, uh, without the Brink's truck. Now, you know, you guys wanna think about that, that's fine, we can question it, but I, I think that, uh, given her experience and how they do this, it's probably not a lot of cash anyway. But it will save us $900 a month. And they'll have to adjust the service contract to reflect that. So what do you think, Bill? I'm asking Bill because he's got the experience here, go ahead. Alright, are you on mute?
Can you hear us?
I don't know if Bill can hear us, Bill, can you hear us? I can't tell if he's on mute or not.
Yeah, he doesn't seem like it.
I think he's got that phone thing going, so. Alright, well, I don't know, uh, is anybody else, well, Bill's trying to figure out the tech, the, the problem there. What, uh, does anybody else have any feelings about this? I mean, I always wondered why we had to pay $900 for a month anyway for Brink's truck, but.
Seems like a good idea to me.
Yeah, definitely.
How much, how much cash handling?
I don't know, I'll have to, I, I will actually ask these questions you come up with, I, I just, I just got this email the other day, so. I told Katie we would talk about it. But apparently they, uh, they're changing too, so apparently if we go with their system of how they're doing, and I, I can get more specifics on that. Uh, you know, we will save that money, $900 a month.
Do you know how they handle the cash now?
No, I don't, um, her message was not very descriptive, um, let me bring it up. One air ring. Alright, so she says at this point, Rodney and Chili's is con, is concern, is concerning, is considering no longer using Brink's on the car service and take our deposits to the bank on Tuesdays and Fridays. Would Ledger WPCA be okay with this? And this would save Ledger WPCA around $900 a month. That's all I got. I'm gonna bring it in Tuesdays and Thursdays and not use the Brink's truck.
I think all we need to ask is, uh, whether they're gonna use somebody who's bonded for the transfer.
Right.
Yeah, I, I gotta think, Terry, that they have 40,000 customers versus our 1400. They have a heck of a lot of cash.
They're not giving it to me.
No way, you're not included in that. So I, I, I will ask, I, I will actually, uh, put those questions to Tina to find out. So we're not gonna act on this tonight, I, I'd rather put something like that on the agenda, so. It just came up, think about it, you know, if you got any other questions, let me know. And I'll ask Tina. And, and, you know, we'll deal with it that way.
Hey, hey Ed, this is Bill, I'm sorry, I hung up on myself. I, I missed some of the initial, uh, instead of having the truck come, how, how are they gonna transfer the money?
They didn't, they didn't tell the details, they just simply said they would be transferring the cash on their own Tuesdays and Fri, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays to the, to the bank.
Okay.
So I don't have specifics, but they're, they're considering, and that was the word, considering, uh, not using the Brink's truck.
Alright, let me, let me see what the town of Ledger is doing, because I think we are not using a Brink's truck either. Um, so I'll find out what they're doing and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, Ian, I, I bumped into Ian today and he talked about, uh, you guys deal with Webster Bank, and there were some things they did, I, I wasn't exactly sure, Bill, I guess you'll have to find out. Uh, because not all the transactions go to citizens across the street, it, I guess you have Webster too, so there's, you have multiple banks. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find out.
Alright, so there's a potential there. Um, the agent reports. Um, I really don't see anything major concern. Um, dirty day seems to have gone down since June. And now we're getting, uh, the tune of 144,000 a month. That month. Uh, I, budgets, I know, I did have, I promised I would talk to Ian about the budget. And Sharon, you, this is funny, it kinda makes me worried about this. Anytime we have a deficit or a surplus, it goes into, it goes into a bucket. Doesn't automatically go into our C and R, just goes into this. He, uh, Ian called it a kind of a savings thing, so. The question I have is that we don't know how much money's in there unless we ask for. You know, and, and then Ian brought up a kind of interesting, he says like, if we wanna spend extra money, we'd go to finance and say, well, how much do we have in this bucket? You know, we got money, we can spend it, if we don't have the money, we don't spend it. Uh, but I, I'm not sure, uh, you know, how to address this, I, I guess it's, you know, we, we know there's money from this past year, we saw it in the budget. But, you know, Ian basically was telling me not to put too much into that, except that, you know, how else do we manage this when we put too much into the budget, so, anyway.
Could that be shown on the report every month?
Well, Ian, I mean Stan, where this came up last month is at the end of the year, I noticed we had a lot more revenue uh, from water usage, you know, I'm talking $200,000.
Yeah.
And we also had, obviously, we had to pay for that water, so we had $50,000 that we had to pay for. So there is technically $150,000. That's not, it doesn't go anywhere, you know, they don't, they just put it somewhere, where the town puts money away. And I'm, I'm assuming they account for that. So for example, if we wanted to do an engineering study for, let's say sewer line from Ledger Center, and it's, the cost may be 35, 40,000, and the town's got 15, and we wanna spend 25,000 additional. I guess we would go to the, to our finance and say, hey, how much money do we get left over from last year? Or how much is in this bucket? And then, if we want to, we spend it.
So, so money, for, for every line item, uh, and, you know, for the town, for WPCA and other towns, you, you have money, if there's surplus, it, it starts out in the general fund, and it has to be transferred to a capital fund as some kind of undesignedated, because you, you've got money left over and you haven't said what you're gonna do with it.
Right.
So I think you wanna ask Ian, what is the WPCA's undesignedated fund balance? That doesn't show up in the budget, right? So, ask him what's the undesignedated fund balance, and also ask whether the transfers have been made at the end of the year from the general fund for your surplus, and how much that was, and, and did it go into, into your undesignedated. I, I could have some of the details wrong, but that's generally how it works.
Right, so we don't know unless we ask, correct? You have to.
Correct, yeah, you don't, the town has undesignedated funds as well, it's undesignedated surplus, and it, it sits in an account, but it's not reported in the budget because it, it, it's cash, it's, it's not an expense.
Right.
It, it's not revenue, it's not expense, it's a fund balance, so you have to ask.
But it may not be in a fund balance because this is an enterprise fund, the WPCA is.
Right.
And in the past, they've just put it in a savings account.
Yeah, makes sense.
Right.
But it doesn't show up in the, it, it's, it's correct, it will not show up in the budget, because it's a, it's an asset.
Exactly.
Yeah, we don't.
And I'd like to comment here that almost every month that we have a discussion about our finances, we find the munis reports to be inadequate for our management oversight. Uh, and we've also talked about this account balance report before, I'd like to formally request of the finance office that we get a easy to understand management report and a fund balance report every month.
Yeah. Second that.
Do, Terry, do we know what uneasily, uh, what report you're looking for? I mean.
Well, we could, we could define it, but, I mean, in, in fundamental numbers, I'd like to see, how much did we take in? How much did we spend? You know, where are we with our accounts? And, uh, how are we with the regu, with regard to the, the 12-month? And how are we with regard, with regard to the 12-month estimate of expenses and, and revenues? I mean, we, we have nothing to go by on a monthly basis that we can really trust.
Ian agreed to provide that at the end of the fiscal year last year.
Right.
So we should be receiving it shortly because the fiscal year is just closing up now. So that's what you want to request.
Year-end summary?
He was going to provide some kind of an Excel spreadsheet that you'd be able to read.
I remember that, and I thought he gave some examples of what it would look like, and we said, yeah, it looked okay.
Yes, he did, but he said he would provide it at the end of the fiscal year, which is now.
I will love, I will have a conversation with Ian this week while getting that report. I'm sure he has it on his computer system somewhere. Be very helpful. I'm looking at the. Fund it from sewer, I don't see anything. Other than maybe VOD has increased, but apparently they're dealing with it. Lakes Tando pump station has some issues. Looks like they're correcting it. Yeah, there's a possibility to pump number two, has a, we'll have to put a newer pill in there. Okay, whole business. The leak test is complete, we saw that. We see the removal of the galloping tank bunker. Please review that so we can move that. Okay. Have awarded the service contract to Grotten Utilities. But that's been signed by the mayor. Are there any other concerns or questions on that?
Hey, Ed, there's background noise coming from Tony and, and I think from Ray. If you guys could make, Tony, when you're typing, it's overshadowing Ed when he's talking.
I think that's me, you're right.
Yeah, we just, just need to mute, thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
What happened, I didn't.
Okay, so we, we have signed that agreement, I, I don't. There's, there's probably some history there, but I think, you know, just unless there's any specific questions, we can move on. Loft is well abandoned, invoice has been approved and paid. That's taken care of. Are there any other old business? You know, we need to discuss? I don't think there's any. Go to new business, there is an invoice to pay for the. Test, our shares, 5,500, so I'll make a motion to approve. Pay for the Upstate Leak Detection LLC invoice, number 381, in the amount of $5,500. For leak detection survey for the town of Ledger.
Second.
Second, are there any discussions on this? They did a pretty good job, it's good to know, Bill, that we don't have a lot of water we can offer. Alright, hearing none. And it's had a vote, although. In favor of approving the invoice, number 381, in the amount of $5,500. Two, Upstate Leak Detection LLC, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Hey, hearing none, thank you, approved. Right, is there any other new business that we haven't discussed? Yes.
Can't do any other business, special meeting.
Alright. Sharon says the meeting's done.
Meeting's done, motion to adjourn.
Alright guys, hey, so don't forget to take a look at that. Package that Grotten just put together for getting to that tank. Otherwise, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, thank you, everyone, okay, we are done. Yep, good night.
Good day.
Yep, okay.
Good night, thanks. See everybody next month.